I'd like to call our September seventeenth regular board meeting to order. Can I get roll call please? Mrs. Leeison?
Here.
Mrs. Bliss? Here. Miss Lot?
Here.
Mrs. Motley?
Here.
Miss Sterns? Mr. Wickham?
Here.
Mrs. Ressler? Here. Please stand for the call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to our board minute approval. Can I get a motion to approve the August twentieth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Leeison. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Leeison?
Aye.
Miss Bliss abstained. Miss Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler? Aye. Can I get a motion to approve the September tenth, twenty twenty-four committee of the whole meeting minutes? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Motley, second by Mr. Wickham. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Leeison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss? Aye. Miss Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler? Abstained. Item three point one, our fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget hearing and cash balance disclosure. Ms. Morrison?
Item five point two of the agenda tonight is our fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget and resolutions. At this time, I would also like to disclose the district's cash balance of seventy-nine million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars as of July first, twenty twenty-four for all funds, including education, operations and maintenance, debt service, transportation, municipal retirement, and social security, capital projects, working cash, tort, and fire prevention and safety. Please open the floor to receive public comments on the budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Can I get a motion to open the floor to receive public comments on the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget? So moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Leeison, second by Ms. Motley. The floor is now open. Are there any comments from the public regarding the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget? All right. If there are no public comments, can I get a motion to close the floor for public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget? So moved. Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Leeison here. Can I get roll call? Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Leeison?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss? Aye. Miss Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler? Aye. Floor is now closed. All right, moving on to our superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. I want to thank Dr. Williams, who successfully kicked off our parent university series. And she mentioned that we've already held the LeveragingPaper.co for academic support for parents. We had a good turnout. She offered both a virtual session at twelve o'clock and six o'clock. Our next event is for, scheduled for September twenty-fifth here, Searching and Planning for College. Happy to report, we already have fifty parents registered for that event, and all four campuses are represented. And thank Dr. Williams for that. That's going to be September twenty-fifth for anyone that's interested, from six to seven thirty here at Oak Forest High School. Our career guide is out. It is currently pushed to social media and our webpage. We will get the printed copies relatively soon here, and make sure that we get each board member a copy of that as well. And then lastly, just happy homecoming to Oak Forest this week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our principal reports.
All right, good evening. She doesn't have comments for you, but Shannon's going to come and join me as I, as I call you. On behalf of the Titans, you're going to see a lot of this lady with me, Shannon Gormly. She is one of our counselors at Tinley Park High School. She's working on her principal prep program. So for the next year, we're going to keep her pretty busy and run her through some paces of, of what it's like completing some of her internship tasks. So you'll see more of her next board meeting, because it'll be hosted at Tinley. But kind of piggybacking off of what Dr. Sikora had just mentioned about the parent university, we're pretty proud of the, we had our first parent meeting with our Titan families, and we handed out really, a, a really nice looking flyer that, that Corey has, Dr. Williams has put together. And every parent had that in their hands when we had, hosted our meeting, had the QR code right on there to sign up, and I will tell you, it was nice to see them all. I, I'd be curious to see how many signed up that evening, just because they were very excited about the opportunities that we, we mentioned on that flyer. So we had over fifty parents there, which was nice for an opening day meeting, talking about everything from safety and security to the use of the Parent Square Communication System, School Links, and the new, the Five Star App. Our homecoming isn't until September thirtieth to the fourth. I wish my sister's schools good luck. I feel like it's super early for homecoming, so we have a, a little bit of a breather here. If anybody on the board, or if anybody who's watching this, has little ones at home, mark your calendar for October sixteenth. It will be our trunk or treat event that's sponsored by our Interact Club, and they're going to have everything. They partnered with Country Club Hills and Public Works from Tinley Park, and, and so it's not just cars with, with trunks of candy. There's going to be giant trucks and machines and, and dump trucks and front loaders and street sweepers and things like that where they can get their candy from as well. So it's, it's a nice night. Lauren Brazel does a great job hosting that for us. On the athletic front, our football team is two and one. Our volleyball team is undefeated in conference. I hope I didn't jinx them, because they're playing TF South this evening. But I bring that up because, you know, it's so nice to kind of live and see life after COVID, even though I even hate saying that word sometimes. This season, this fall season, we have over three hundred and fifty students that are signed up that are cleared for fall sports. That's one of our highest numbers in, in even, that, that compares to where we're at, if not higher, in a, in a regular season prior to COVID. So we're back, and that doesn't count, count the kids that are involved in activities as well. So it's nice to be back. It's nice to have a few weeks under our belt and look forward to seeing Principal Shannon in, in the near future here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening from the Bremen Braves. We have homecoming under our belt already, so it's nice to, you know, have that out of the way, not out of the way, because we had a great week last week, tons of activities, lots of participation from students, staff. It was really a lively, lively week at Bremen High School. One thing I want to note on the heels of homecoming is we inducted two alumni into our Hall of Fame, and that was Dominic D'Ambrogio, class of nineteen ninety-two, obviously the chief of police in Oak Forest, so is still working here and serving the community right in our, our own backyard, and then Sue Vaughn Nelson, class of nineteen sixty-two. The class of sixty-two has been really, really involved with our scholarship program. So they're huge supporters of that, and Sue was a big philanthropist for lots of organizations, including Bremen High School. So it was great to have them out. They come on Friday morning and talk to groups of students, so that's always fun. Dominic joked a little bit about how he kind of took a roundabout path to figure out what he wanted to do, and I think for the seniors in the group, that really resonated, because he hit the message home of, you might think you know what you want to do or have no idea, and that's okay, and you know, you're, the path that you take is going to be the path that you take, but you're going to kind of end up where you end up, and it's okay to, you know, make different choices and change the path. And then Sue kind of had a very straight path. She knew what she wanted to do. She went into education, she had a family, and kind of checked things off right in a row. So the kids were great. They engaged them in some great dialogue, and then we had a nice day of inducting them at our pep assembly, out on the turf, and then they did the coin toss at our football game. So that was really exciting, and rode in the parade, of course. Just like Dr. Nolan mentioned, our numbers are up for fall athletics. So we didn't talk, but I actually ran, Coach O'Shea ran our fall athletic numbers. We have three hundred and thirty-three kids participating in fall athletics, which is up for us. Thanks to your guys' support, we were able to add the freshman level of soccer. Soccer for our boys is a huge program and growing, so we're able to keep a lot of additional kids out on a freshman soccer team this year, which has been great. We also added a JV level of POMs, so if you've seen our POMs, team perform at any of our events, homecoming, for example, I mean, there are tons of kids out there participating, and adding that extra level has just really allowed a lot more kids to be involved. Same with flag football, one more opportunity for our girls to be out there, and now it's kind of competing at more of an athletic level, where last year, we kind of softly opened it with our activities. So that's great. Character Strong is back in, in action. We are a couple of weeks into our lessons, our FLC with our freshmen, so we had a lesson today, talking about building community and community agreements. That is really running pretty well in our freshman learning center, so we're having some fun with that. And the last fun thing I'll leave you with, I proposed to my freshmen today, throughout the, all of our FLC sessions, I am going to be shadowing one student. I'm going to do a day in the life of a Bremen freshman on September twenty-sixth. So we sent out a Google form within our lessons today. Kids could sign up if they want me to be the person, if they want me to shadow them for that day, and I'm going to do the full experience. So somebody joked and asked if I was going to ride the bus. Dr. Boswell, I think I might need to, just for, you know, some, some homework, some research. We, we have some, you know, bus stuff going on, but I'm going to do the full experience, and I said they can shadow me on the flip side too, and see what a principal does. So looking forward to that. I will keep you guys posted with how that goes. Thanks.
Evening, everyone. Little news from Hillcrest. I didn't really get to, to speak on the start of our school year, as we were presenting, as we hosted last month. Great start to the school year so far at Hillcrest. Couple of weeks ago, we were able to have our senior sunrise, which is now the second year that we've done it. We had, I think, almost two hundred of our seniors show up at five-thirty in the morning. Really good event. Last week, Caritreszenberg runs our adventure club, took a group of students out to the Little Calumet River. But they were kayaking. They weren't in the water. They were kayaking. But that's actually a part of the African American Heritage Trail. So they also, you know, in addition to getting, going outside, learning how to kayak, there's a little bit of history involved in that activity as well. As was mentioned earlier, this week is homecoming. We had our Powderpuff game today. We do it during eighth period. Students are able, a bit of a fundraiser, they go out during eighth period to, to watch the game. We had our flag team versus Powderpuff. So we started with flag football for our girls this year, and as, as the two previous principals said, their numbers are higher than they've been, ours are as well, we've got flag football that was just added this year as well. So our athletic numbers are going very well. Just won our first game this past weekend, and so they had it, the, the girls who are playing it as a competitive sport versus the girls who are just doing it for homecoming week. Well, that didn't turn out really well for the girls who are just playing. So they ended up mixing the teams together for the rest of the game, and it was a much more evenly matched game for the rest of the, the contest this afternoon. We have what we're calling our carnival on Friday after school for homecoming, so it'll be from three-thirty till about five-thirty inside the gates of the stadium. Bunch of different activities and things for our students to do then. And then on Friday night is the homecoming game versus Tinley Park, starts at six o'clock. We had a recent loss in the community. Coach Lee Cole, so Letitia Cole, who's been doing some work for us with some consulting, her father passed away about a month ago. He was a thirty-year veteran of the Country Club Hills Cougars football. He, he coached for over thirty years. Yes, Coach Cole. Very well-known throughout Country Club Hills. So we're going to honor him. His family's coming at halftime. We're going to honor him at halftime, and then we're also going to name a scholarship in his name for senior night at the end of the year through the athletic department as well, because I, I started, I was, actually, Letitia and I were scheduled to meet the day after her, her father had just passed away, and obviously, she was, she was mourning pretty hard at that point. So I didn't really ask her a lot of questions, but I've asked a lot of people throughout the community about the impact that Coach Cole had. Huge impact, really, like, our coaching staff, most of our coaches on our coaching staff were coached by him at one point. A bunch of our students, our current student athletes are coached by him, so a really big impact, so we wanted to make sure that we did something special for him and his family for homecoming on Friday night. One other thing, that, this was just something that, that kind of came up last week. We have a recent graduate, Dylan Smith, who joined the Air Force, and he has kept in contact with a bunch of his teachers at Hillcrest and things like that. Well, our teachers came to find out that he was graduating in San Antonio, and that none of his family was going to be able to make it out for his Air Force graduation. So, science teacher Cordeena Tate came into my office last Monday and said, hey, I, I can catch a cheap, a cheap flight. I think I'm going to go out for his graduation. She took the day, flew out there, pictures. He was supported by one of our staff. That just kind of shows how Hillcrest staff goes above and beyond sometimes, you know? She flew all the way out to San Antonio, so he had someone that was there to support him for his graduation during, for his Air Force graduation. So that's it. Thanks.
Dr. Williams is going to take care of Delta real quick.
Oh, yeah. Support members, on behalf of Erin, she wanted me to share some good news with you. They have seen great improvements in their attendance rates in just one short month of school. They started with an overall rate of sixty-one percent, but have put some interventions in place, and half their newest social worker, Molly Fahey, was closing that gap. As of today, they're up to seventy-four percent attendance rate, and have hopes of continuing to see improvement. They are one class shy of hitting seventy-five classes completed overall, and they're actually working through a new program, and the students are actually enjoying the learning, which is always a good thing. And once they complete a hundred, hundred classes, they'll have a little pizza party. This week, they started their live-taught classes, so Ms. Nealon actually teaches health, so they do a little bit on the computer, and then they do a little bit as a group to, to give them a little bit of a break. And Mr. Coffey is doing civics with the students in a hybrid setting. On October third, Dana Dobrovitz is hosting their annual career fair. They currently have twelve confirmed vendors from various unions and organizations in the area, as well as military branch recruiters, and she'll have flyers to send out to you guys to invite in her state. So that is the good news from Delta. You're welcome.
Well, greetings from Oak Forest High School. Welcome, everyone. At the last board meeting, I mentioned Bengal beautification, which we had a couple Saturdays ago. That was the brainchild of Dave Curtin, and believe it or not, on that beautiful morning, we had ninety-four students sign in and help us pull weeds and work around the grounds. As you know, we've been working, doing quite a bit of construction the last two years. So this summer, our custodians spend a lot of time inside of the building, and so the outside of the building was just something that, it really took a whole community to, to bring it up to speed, so it's looking wonderful. We had lots of coaches out that morning as well, and I think if, if you had a chance to get here before the sun went down, you probably saw great improvements out there, and I know, I know our, our groundskeeper was delighted with the work, but, you know, he was a little concerned, like, you know what's going to happen, but lots of shovels and, and weed pulling, and they did a really great job. As everyone has said, it is our homecoming week, red, white, and blue. I think you probably caught on to the theme, looking back there at, at the admin team. We do have the parade on Friday at twelve-thirty, if anyone can join us for that. Our parade route, we do that during the day so that we can go around to the feeder schools. That is certainly a delight. And then our assembly at two-ten. They'll, maybe we can even pull you into some games if you're here. We'd love to have you, maybe not, maybe not doing the, the tug of war, which I, we were talking about, that's my least favorite, but, but it'll, it'll be a great time anyways. Game against Bremen High School in our stadium at six o'clock, and then, of course, the dance the following day. Really looking forward to that. I just have a brief presentation for you tonight, centering on our English language learners. So if you'll forgive me, I'm going to turn on the projector in just a moment. Okay. I just want to take a few moments. Certainly at, at board meetings, we get the chance to recognize people and their hard work, and, and we really appreciate that chance to, to come in front of you and, and tell you about things that are going on in our buildings, and, and this is definitely one program that I don't want to, it's been on the, on my mind for the last couple of years, something that I really wanted to showcase for all of you, to learn about our English language learners here at Oak Forest High School. Let me turn it on. Okay. So I wanted to share with you a little bit about our program, because our program is a little different than most traditional English learned programs. We have a hundred and eighty-six students that we service, either through direct services or students who, who were monitoring their progress throughout the school year. Our program is different in that we have students that come, we have a very diverse population of English language learners. Seventeen different countries, at, at last count, currently, we're serving. And you'll see on there seventeen home languages, and I say home languages, because in just a moment, you'll see some of our students highlighted, and many of our students speak multiple languages. So the seventeen different home languages translates into many more languages that our students speak, with a wide variety of language skills. Some of the students have been born in the United States, and some are just brand-new to the country. Sometimes we get them within the week that they've come to the country, never speaking English. So our students come from seventeen different countries. Currently, our population, we have students from Honduras, Laos, Egypt, Vietnam, Poland, Russia, Italy, the Philippines, China, Mexico, Nigeria, India, Afghanistan, Colombia, Venezuela, Jordan, and Uganda. It really is, if you have the chance to experience one of our EL classes, the diversity of, of the students and their cultures all melting together, we really are the melting pot here at Oak Forest. I'm going to show you a little bit of a video that two of our teachers put together, Mr. DeLuca and Caitlin McMahon. They put this together, and the topic was, I asked them to have the students share with us what languages they speak, so that'll be the first thing they talk about. The next thing is, talk to us about where they were born, where they, where they've come from, and then their favorite part of Oak Forest High School and their plans for after-high school are all sort of melding together there, so.
I speak English and Spanish.
I speak Hindi, Gujarati, Urdu, English, and I can read Arabic.
I speak English and Spanish.
I speak Spanish.
I'm speaking Persian language, in English language.
I speak Spanish.
I speak two languages. I speak Arabic, Egyptian, and English.
I speak Spanish, Urdu, English.
I speak three languages, Hindi, Gujarati, and English.
I speak English and Spanish.
I speak English and Spanish.
I speak two languages, English and Spanish. I speak all three languages, Gujarati, Urdu, English, and Hindi. I will, I speak English and Spanish.
And I speak three languages, Gujarati, Hindi, and English.
I can speak two languages. I can speak Thai, Alaw.
I speak Arabic and English.
I speak Hindi, Gujarati, English, and Kandawar and Ushia Spanish.
I was born in the Persian.
And I was born in Gujarat, India.
I am from Benesena.
I was born in Chicago, Illinois, back in the years.
I was born here in Illinois, and I lived in the forest my childhood.
I am from Colombia.
I was born in Gujarat, India.
Born in Egypt.
I was born in Ticos, in Aragua.
I was born in India.
It was when all my friends were in my English class, and we got to go on field trips together, like bowling, the crew, and the eagle tanks.
Mr. DeLuca is best teacher in history. He likes to hear student opinions in classroom. And Mr. McMahon, she's best and really good teacher. I love to hear her and talk about my problem. She is really helping me and making me comfortable in class.
And my favorite teacher is Ms. Boyer, my math teacher, because I love how she teach and how she communicate with us.
My favorite thing, my favorite memory of the school is when I first started soccer.
After high school, I'm trying to go to college to be a programmer or a mechanic.
I was trained by one student studying causology.
And my favorite memory about Oak Forest High School is that when we do cultural fairs and activities and field trips and stuff that we go out with teachers.
My favorite memory of Oak Forest High School is when we went to the eagle times.
And my favorite memory is that the one day we played cricket at the school.
After high school, my goals are to enter college and study to be a dentist and be able to graduate without problems. Thank you. That is.
There we go. Okay. So there's just a little, a small sampling of Mr. DeLuca's and Mrs. McMahon's classes. They were able to do that on the green screen, just tell you a little bit about themselves. And I wanted to highlight some of the changes that we made last school year. One of the things we really wanted to focus on last year was revising the curriculum for our newcomer students. So we added three additional classes last year, one of them being a language lab, another one, the Intro to Science and Engineering Practices, and then a Foundations of Algebra. What that did is for our newcomer students, it gave them the ability to really travel all day with other students who were just brand-new to the language. We have four different levels here in the school of students who we tried to track throughout the, the school day, and some of them only have, some of those students that you saw were newcomers, some of those students are our fourth-year students, so some might only have one EL class during the day. So we added some classes for the newcomers. We also had some additional staff, added our interventionists, we have an EL interventionist, added some additional math inter, or math interventions, and English interventionist, and they're doing pull-out and push-in work, so they go and work in the EL classrooms, and then they're also pulling out students, working on specific skills for those students. Our, a shout-out to our speech pathologist here at Oak Forest High School. She also will serve as an interventionist, working with language acquisition skills with our EL students. And we added several other things last year that you probably have heard about around the table when you're certainly passing money to allow us to purchase these different things, but Elevation is a database program, and we're just getting started with it, but it can do many, many more things with, with ti, tips for teachers about how to teach students who are English learners. We have the, the software program, Reading Horizons Elevate. The district also started using something called Gateway Languages, and these have been two game changers for us. The Gateway Languages allow us to have conversations with families through an interpreter. So a lot of times, there was a disconnect where we tried to have other students translate for us, or a student translate for us, and that was very difficult. And so what we were able to do with Gateway Languages is a staff member can pick up a phone, dial the number, and then we'll get a translator for the languages on, on the phones, that we can make those family connections that we need to make. Additionally, we're rolling out Parent Square. That was in its infancy's last year. We're really starting to get into a groove with the Parent Square. The really, really game-changing thing about Parent Square is that parents receive all that information in their native language. So that's been really, really important, even at the start of the school year, for our EL teachers, to be able to use Parent Square and send things home, knowing that, that the message will get delivered. So I want to highlight who our teachers are. Please know that this is something that, there's really only one teacher that spends her full day with EL, EL students, and that is Caitlin McMahon. She's been with this program for a long time. She's really our bedrock here at Oak Forest High School. But then we have additional teachers who might teach one section or two sections in English, and then math, in science, social studies. I mentioned our speech path. We also have someone in, in the business, teaching a semester class, and then also in PE, teaching English learners Drivers Ed, for them to be able to get their driver's license, just like all of our, all of our students are able to do. We have wonderful support staff here. We have Lynette Majewski in the back. She is another bedrock that's been here at Oak Forest with us for, for many years. If, if we don't have the answers, we know where to look for the answers with her. And then we have the support staff of, of bilingual tutors, bilingual assistants that help in the classroom as well. We have Arabic, Spanish, and we actually were lucky enough to find a Gujarati support staff tutor as well. So how did all those changes go? All of our, our students take an access test during this, during the end of the school year, and the average progress for all of our students across the access, it's a, it's just a range between one and six, right, four and one, six. The average progress for those students is a point one eight, and those new students last year, with all the additional pieces that we put in with the new curriculum and the intervention support, their average progress last year was a point four four. So, so we're really excited about the changes that we've been able to make. Just really wanted to take a moment to give a shout-out to everyone working with all of those students. When you stop to, to think about it, or when anyone walks into those classrooms, it's amazing the amount of patience they have, the amount of planning they put into it, and just the amount of camaraderie that they have, and, and the kids certainly speak highly about their experiences here, and, and really, it's just something that I wanted to take the time tonight to highlight to you. So thank you for giving me that, that chance to do that. So, thank you for giving me that, that chance to do that, and just let you know that we appreciate that everything that, that you've been able to do, and certainly everything that the Administrative Center's been able to do for us as well with all the different resources. So, so just a thank you from Oak Forest High School. All right, thank you very much for the principal reports. Moving on to our FOIA request.
Thank you, Mrs. Wrestler. Since the last regular board meeting, we received the following Freedom of Information Act requests. The National Hispanic Institute Volunteer Office requested directory information of honor roll students for the high school graduating class of twenty-eight, twenty-seven, and twenty-six. Directory information being name, address, high school, phone, email, of which is available. This request has been completed. Owen Wang, South Cook News, requested, requested a list of all new teachers and staff at the following data points for the upcoming school year. Name school, title, bio, photo, and a list of all leaving or retiring teachers and staff at the following data points for the upcoming school year in our district. Name school, title, and years of service. This has been completed. Owen Wang, South Cook News, requested a list of all available student schools, student activities and clubs for the new school year, as well as their faculty sponsor name. This has been completed. Owen Wang requested a copy of each school's calendar for the upcoming school year. This has been completed. And Owen Wang, South Cook News, requested official enrollment for each schools as reported to the state for the new school year. This request has also been completed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any board member reports? Just want to wish everyone a happy Home, it's Homecoming, happy and safe Homecoming, and to the Hispanic, Latin, and Latinx community, wish everyone a very happy and celebratory National Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you. All right, moving on to our new business, item five-point-one. Ms. Morrison.
Item five-point-one is the bills, addendum to bills, payroll, and CDS bills. These items are being recommended for full board approval.
So, second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley, any discussion? Roll call, please, Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. Motley.
Aye.
Mrs. List. Aye. Ms. Lot.
Aye.
Mr. Wickham.
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler. Aye. Item five-point-two.
Item five-point-two is the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget and resolutions. These items are being recommended for full board approval.
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Motley, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham.
Aye.
Mrs. Motley.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. List. Aye. Ms. Lot.
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler. Aye. Item five-point-three.
Item five-point-three is the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five compensation reports. These items are being recommended for full board approval.
Some moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Lot, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. Lot.
Aye.
Mrs. List. Aye. Ms. Motley.
Aye.
Mr. Wickham.
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler. Aye. Item five-point-four.
Item five-point-four is the resolution naming Evelyn Gleason as our appointee with the Bremen Township Treasurer's Office. These items are being recommended for full board approval.
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Motley, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham.
Aye.
Mrs. Motley.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. List. Aye. Ms. Lot.
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler. Aye. Item five-point-five, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Mrs. Wrestler. Five-point-five is the request for additional sections. I'm asking the board to approve five more unnamed sections to be used only if necessary. The superintendent is recommending the addition of these five unnamed sections for board approval.
Some moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Motley, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Motley.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. List. Aye. Ms. Lot.
Aye.
Mr. Wickham.
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler. Aye. Item five-point-six.
Five-point-six are the overnight field trip requests for Bremen and Oak Forest as presented at committee of the whole. These are being recommended for full board approval.
Some moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. List. Aye. Ms. Lot.
Aye.
Mrs. Motley.
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler. Aye. Personnel recommendations, Dr. Goggins.
To Mrs. Wrestler, under retirement, Sue Botson and Jackie Fredrick King. Under lead, Jessica Jensen and Tom Kearney. Under resignations, Crystal Gilich. And under employment, Joseph Monahan, Rhonda Craco, Dori Elmore, Linda Liejek, David O'Toole, and Isella Enriquez. These are being recommended to the full board for approval.
Some moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Lot, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Ms. Lot.
Aye.
Mrs. List. Aye. Ms. Motley.
Aye.
Mr. Wickham.
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler. Aye. All right, moving on to our comments from the public. Do we have any public comments? Just ask you, we're kind of. In case you thought of something. All right, if there are no public comments, our announcements are as follow.